District two is in the house. Uh, my name is Tony Benton. I'm gonna be your moderator. And first of all, I hope everyone is registered to vote. Uh, because you have to register to participate to be part of this thing. Um, so if you're not registered to vote, make sure that you do that so you can be included. We're excited, uh, to have our community here today. Uh, about two weeks ago, we had a town hall meeting on the uptick in violence in our community. Uh, it was packed. We had a lot of commentary, a lot of feedback, and, um, it was all over the place. Now, that's kind of expected because it was really the first time that folks had a chance and an opportunity to kind of share what was going on with them. And we found out a number of different things that were happening in our community. We also had, uh, panel members up here, uh, who were working as activists, uh, police officer, elected officials, uh, community members, social service organizations who shared their opinions as well as what was taking place. The way that this will work today is each que- each, uh, candidate will get a minute to answer a question. They'll get two-minute opening statements. And after that minute, uh, then there'll be some room for some dialogue where we can have more context engaged involved in this. The key issues that we're gonna be talking about today are crime, uh, we'll be talking about homelessness, we'll be talking about affordable housing, and we'll be talking about drugs in our community. Now, each of these things is very nuanced and they may all either be connected, uh, but for some folks, these are individual experiences and people are experiencing these things differently. We're gonna take these particular issues and then dive deeper into them and hopefully get to some of the nuances that are affecting the lives of people who are in our community. So I wanna be clear that this isn't just happening in South Seattle. It's happening all over Seattle. We just did a debate yesterday at South Central Seattle, South Seattle Community College. Um, many of the things that we have on tap for today were discussed there. Although we do have some specific issues that are unique to our very diverse communities, and we'll get to those as well. So thank you for being here. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Each of our candidates will have a two-minute opening statement. Um, and, uh, I, I'm, just because, uh, Councilmember Morales is closest to me, I am going to give Councilmember Morales, uh, the opportunity, uh, to open this up with two minutes for her opening statement. And then when we close, we'll also have closing statements. And then I will, uh, give, uh, Candidate Wu the opportunity to go first, uh, at that point. So let this begin. Thank you for all for being here. For those of you who were watching us, uh, and couldn't make it, we know you're there and hopefully we'll get your questions answered as well. I know that some of these, uh, questions may appear on the chat. Um, and, uh, yeah, you know, uh, I'm, I'm gonna have a, a couple of things to say to our candidates, uh, one of which is thank you both for running for office. Um, it is not an easy thing to do. And at the end of the day, uh, I, I need to figure out who I wanna vote for as well. And so I'm listening like everyone else is listening, um, and hopefully I'll be able to make up my mind which, uh, uh, check mark I wanna make on my ballot as well. It sounds like some of you out there already have a candidate in mind, and so I ask you to be open-minded. This is why we're having this debate here tonight. Um, Councilmember Morales, you have two minutes.
Can I ask a question before we start?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question before we start?
Yes.
Will you be the timekeeper and how will you let us know when our-
Yes, I will let you, I will let you know when you have 10 seconds left.
Great, okay.
Yes, I will let you know when you, again, aw- awesome question. I will let you know when you have 10 seconds left. Um, and, uh, yeah, let's go.
Here we go. Uh, well, good evening, everybody. Really excited to see you all here. I'm Tammy Morales. I am the current council member representing District Two. Uh, I am a mom with two kids in Seattle Public Schools. Uh, I have worked and organized in the South End, uh, in District Two for over 20 years. Uh, and I'm also trained as a neighborhood planner, and so that really shapes the work that I've been doing. Uh, I actually got into, uh, an interest in being a council member because I really wanna stop the displacement that's happening among our Black and Brown, uh, neighbors and our small businesses. Um, we know that folks in the Central Area, in the CID, in the South End deserve to stay rooted in their community, and they deserve the opportunity to build generational wealth. I heard a couple of questions about this already. Um, that's the work that I've been doing. Uh, that's the work that I wanna continue to do because I know that that, um, anti-displacement work is very important. Um, and that's why, uh, in my first term, I, uh, supported organizations like Africatown who are bringing Black-owned businesses back to the CD. It's why I put a million dollars into apprenticeship programs so that our young people, uh, particularly folks who are not gonna go to college, know that there are opportunities for career pathways that will help them pay for their, uh, you know, support them and their families. Uh, and it's why I made sure that there was city funding in the, uh, Tubman Health Center that recently or is in the process of opening because it's important that we have access to healthcare here in, in, uh, the South End. We don't have a hospital down here. Um, so these are examples of the kind of work that I've been doing. I will say I'm really proud of the work that we've done, that we've been able to do in the midst of a global pandemic, in the midst of a global economic crisis. My team worked hard and we collaborated very effectively with my colleagues, uh, to make sure that we had funding for safe street improvements in the South End, funding for tenant protections and worker protections, uh, that we put millions of dollars for community safety programs here in the South End. Uh, this is the work that I am here to do. Uh, I'm excited about the opportunity to continue doing that on behalf of the people of District Two, and I'm excited for your support.
Thank you. Um, yes. If you'd like to do that. Uh, Candidate Wu, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Tanya Wu. I grew up in Beacon Hill. I'm a small business owner and I now live in the Rainier Valley. So I've seen what happens to neighborhoods that don't have a voice. I've seen what happens when we are forced to live with bad city policy, and I'm running to change that. I was able to push back against city discrimination against one of the most endangered neighborhoods in the nation and was able to win. And I wanna fight for all of South Seattle. I know how to achieve better public safety. During the pandemic, I strapped on my mask and went out and started patrolling Chinatown International District, um, started a group called the Chinatown International District Community Watch. We go into the encampments, we provide mutual aid, we deal with the fights, we work with our first responders to help support our small businesses as well as the residents in that neighborhood. Um, together we're able to achieve better public safety. I know how to build. Uh, my family renovated the Louisa Hotel, which offers workforce housing, which only charges a percentage of our tenants' income, so no one's forced to pay a rent they cannot afford. We need to build more housing. I know how to do that. We need to get past our elected leaders telling us what they're going to do instead of talking to community and listening to what community wants to do. We need to have elected leaders who show up and do the hard work to run the city. We need policy changes. We cannot have our, our small nonprofits and organizations fighting for funds. We have to work together to make sure that everyone can rise up. And so my name is Tanya Wu. I promise to work hard, to show up, and together we could do what it takes to make Seattle better.
Okay, you still have 20 seconds left if you'd like to use it. You still have 20 seconds left.
Oh, I do. Wow. Uh, can I save it for later?
Okay, we'll, we'll just go on. So we're gonna start right now. This is something that I want, uh, our candidates to be aware of. There are these, a lot of these things happen at 30,000 feet. At 30,000 feet, decisions are made, and again, they can be very nuanced, but once they hit the ground, uh, things can be very different. So we're gonna have open, honest, frank conversation here. Uh, I wanna address those things that happen at 30,000 feet because it is good for our community to understand the process that's taking place. Uh, but then we'll also have dialogue where our candidates will have the opportunity to, uh, address some of the more nuanced things and the way that they impact our community. We're going to start with public safety. And, yeah, it's a big one in, in our community. And, um, both, both candidates and Candidate Wu, uh, I, I'm going to start with you. The, uh, initial init- this should only take you about 15 or 20 seconds. If it takes longer than that, okay? And this is just to get an understanding of how well you are familiar with our communities. Uh, and the question is, are there communities that you would not walk through at night? And you have 20 seconds, you can answer that. We're gonna get into public safety, but are there communities, because I know our community is aware of this, are there communities that you would not walk through at night? And we'll give you a chance to get deeper into that in a second, but you have 20 seconds.
I grew up here, um, and there isn't a community I wouldn't walk through at night that I'm not already walking through. I walk through the Chinatown International District, 12th and Jackson, 9:00 PM at night with my group, uh, Community Watch. Um, I, I would advise that if you do walk at night, you walk in with, in numbers, you walk with a friend, please do not walk alone. Um, but, and, you know, I, Rainier Beach Safeway is right next to my home. I, I shop there all hours of the day, um, and, you know, I grew up here, I feel safe.
Okay, so the couple of communities that I heard were 12th and Jackson and the Rainier Beach Safeway area. Uh, and we'll get more into that, but same question for Councilmember Morales. Uh, and again, this is just a public safety issue. We've had conversations here earlier. Are there communities that you would not walk through in particular at night?
In District Two?
In District Two.
I can think of a couple of other neighborhoods I might not walk through at night. Um, you know, I understand that, uh, people are afraid that there's a lot happening on our streets. You know, my son, uh, takes the bus at night and comes home from basketball practice and things that are going on at school. So, um, you know, I share the concern. I will agree with Tanya that, um, I don't think there are neighborhoods that we need to, you know, avoid. I think it's important to be wise-
Okay.
-and safe. Uh, and I will also say one last thing, which is that, um, as I talk to people, I know that there are, there's a lot of work the city needs to do to just make sure that there's better lighting, not just at like transit stations, but-
That's a-
-from the stations in.
Ah, okay, so you see what I'm trying to do here? Now we're gonna dive deeper into that question because I've heard from our community that there are neighborhoods in this community that they don't wanna walk through at night. Um, and if you were willing to do that, that's fine. Uh, Candidate Wu, I'm gonna give you one minute to address the concerns of our community about public safety. And I, and we're gonna dive deeper into this, but just one minute, and if it's a concern, um, public safety in our community, what you think of it, how you plan to address it, if it is a concern, uh, and again, however you wanna start this conversation off, we're gonna go deeper into it, but one minute to address public safety in our community.
Yes, I, I acknowledge that there is a concern, and we need to start off by engaging community members especially. Uh, you know, there was a lockdown in Franklin High School last week. Um, people are concerned about fentanyl use, uh, near Summit Sierra High School and near 12th and Jackson. Um, there's been a lot of shootings, we're reaching our homicide rates, uh, that were from last year, and a third of those homicides are happening here in South Seattle. We just can't ignore public safety. We need a long-term and a short-term plan that incorporates not only community engagement and community empowerment, but we also need resources for people who are experiencing behavioral health issues or addiction, um, issues. They need treatment and they need help and partnership especially. We need to make sure our youth have after-school programs, um, they can go to mentoring programs, uh, after-school help at our libraries, community centers that won't charge too, too much of a fee, um, late-night basketball programs and activities for kids to, to be able to, you know-
10 seconds.
We also need to make sure that, you know, there's an economic engine here in South Seattle, help our small businesses, we're providing living wage jobs for people, for young adults, there needs to be training and apprenticeships in our community centers-
And time. Uh, same question, uh, Councilmember Morales. I, I know I'm giving you the big overview right now, uh, but public safety, your thoughts on addressing public safety, uh, what the issues are, what the concerns are, and again, we'll have some time to get into more specifics about this. But first, kind of the overview from you on public safety.
Sure, well, I think Tanya and I probably agree on a lot of this. Um, you know, we have a lot of overlapping crises on our streets right now, um, and we know that our communities are struggling. Uh, you know, I think for me, this really comes down to making sure that people's basic needs are met. Our neighborhoods will be safe when our neighbors are thriving and not just trying to survive. Um, so I'm sure I'll have an opportunity to get into more of what that means later. Uh, for now, what I'll say is that, um, we need police to be able to respond to violent crime, to be able to investigate those crimes and to hopefully start closing some cases. Uh, but we, that's one strategy, and we need many different things. So we also need, uh, trained experts who can respond to mental health crises, who can respond to addiction and substance use disorder that's happening on the street. We need that alternative civilian-led response when cops don't need to respond to something with a gun. We also need to invest more in, uh, the Community Safety Initiative I mentioned before, which is a collaboration of, uh, Urban Family, Choose 180, Community Passageways, Rainier Beach Action Coalition, Southeast Safety Net. Uh, these are groups that are engaged with street engagement with our young people-
10 seconds.
-diversion, violence interruption, all of that is proven to be effective, and we need to scale it all up.
Okay, uh, Candidate, uh, sure, if you wanna clap, you clap. Uh, Candidate Wu, um, one of the questions that we heard was you, you lack the political experience to deal with these issues, and your hyper-focus, uh, is on the Chinese International District. Uh, what can you say to the rest of District Two, uh, that can aware them of your ability to say, "I am ready to deal with all of District Two," which we've been redistricted now, so the Chinese International District, the Yester Terrorists, they're part of what we do, but we have communities that were here before that. And I'm gonna give you the opportunity, uh, to address that in the way that you want to. It's fine with me if you share your passion about the CID. Um, but that's one of the things that came up was, uh, one, your potential inexperience addressing this, and your hyper-focus potentially on the Chinese International District.
Thank you for that question. That's a great question. So I think people who say that are inexperienced are misinformed. I have experience out on the streets. I see what's happening at 12th and Jackson, the fentanyl deaths. I've been on my hands and knees resuscitating people. I've seen people die. I've gone into the encampments. I've seen people who are needed services. I've seen people who are prey on those who are unhoused and, and just the huge inequalities. Um, I've seen, I've gone to neighborhoods, uh, where language barriers, um, causes a huge barrier to getting services and resources from the city. I've seen people who don't engage in political process because they don't know what is going on, um, seeing communities that don't have a voice and are forced to live with just fat state policies and seeing that displacement and gentrification. I've built housing, I've been through the whole permitting process, um, in the last five years, and so I know how to build. Um, I've lived in this community, I know its history, and part of gentrification displacement is knowing the history and make sure that living history lives on-
10 seconds.
And so regarding the Chinatown International District, I don't live there, I work there, and the CID consists of three neighborhoods. Um, and these are very diverse neighborhoods-
And time. Um, Candidate, Candidate Wu, I'm, I'm gonna further get into this, uh, a little bit with you. Do you, do you have specific items that you would say, "I align with," um, that there may be a council member that we have now? Um, do you have specific, uh, thoughts and ideas, uh, again, that you can put forward that will let our communities know that beyond the normal rhetoric that we hear, um, there are uniquely things that you feel that your experience as a boots-on-the-ground person can provide you, uh, to all of us in our community? And again, I'll give you about 30 seconds.
Oh, um, can you repeat the question? What specific-
Is, uh, what, what are the, what are the specific things that you can share with us right now?
Okay.
That you can say, "These are my ideas, this is how I would deal with," or are there things that the City Council already has in place that you would say, "I would continue this, I would add to tax to this," and we'll talk about, but are, are there things you can specifically tell us right now that you would put forward?
Yes, um, based on my experience, I would really push for the alternative to policing. Uh, we, I know we have the dual dispatch right now, but that is also policing. We need that alternative, social workers who are not part of the police department, um, but have access to police information, to be able to go out there and build that trust among our unhoused neighbors. Um, we also need to streamline our permitting process. Uh, it takes anywhere from two to six years to get a permit. We wanna build more, we need to build faster, more efficiently, and we need to build, it, be able to build faster means be able to take advantage of cheaper prices because as we wait for permits, they go up by 30%.
And time.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Morales, uh, you were, were part of a, a council, uh, and you correct me if I'm wrong here, that was in favor of defunding the police by 50%. Um, are you, are you still there? Uh, and what are the alternatives to defunding the police? And, and how do you see that working? Um, we, we know that there are other alternatives here, we have some in the community, but I have heard, and as you can hear from the audience right now, that defunding the police wasn't necessarily the answer, it seems, but do you still feel that same way? And tell us how you think that that's going to work.
So let me correct the record on this because the City Council never voted to reduce the budget by 50%. There was an amendment offered in the summer of 2020, it never even got a second. And so I'm gonna challenge all of our media outlets, uh, to either produce a voting record or stop making this claim. What I will say is that, uh, you know, in the last several weeks, maybe the last several months, we have seen repeated, uh, video and audio recordings of a department that is, uh, out of control, uh, and that demonstrates why I will never stop demanding accountability from this department. So since 2020, we have fully funded their staffing plan, their hiring bonuses, their recruitment marketing strategy, their technology requests, and their officer wellness program. So the idea that this department is somehow strapped for cash is false. It makes up almost 50% of our general fund. So what I will say is that it is my job as a city council member to hold this department and all of our departments accountable, and it is also my job to ask the question whether for this enormous investment, we are actually seeing increased public safety.
10 seconds.
What I will say is that even police boosters right now understand that it is the culture of this department itself that is jeopardizing public safety, and we need to fix that.
Thank you. And what has been effective for you in terms of community options and how you feel about those options of community essentially take, now, there's a lot of things that happen with this. You, 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 I don't think anybody, uh, wants someone that doesn't have the experience, uh, to have to take care of a situation that a trained police officer should be at. Uh, but there are things that some folks are saying right now that are working, some are less happy with. At the end of the day, I'd like you to address, uh, some of those community options that you think they are working, and if you have examples of, again, how this could ensure public safety.
Um, so, you know, the thing that I talk about, whether we're talking about public safety in general, whether we're talking about youth violence, whether we're talking about gun violence, is that, um, as I said before, our communities will be safe, our neighbors will be safe when they are thriving and not trying to survive. So for me, you know, when I think about, for example, um, you know, we've had several gun incidents, uh, this summer, it is tragic and frustrating and hard to watch, uh, and we do need police to respond to those situations. Uh, we also have a state legislature that is really, uh, proactive and leading in gun, uh, sensible gun responsibility laws. We also have an obligation as a city, especially as this, uh, local government, to acknowledge the role that we have played in generations of disinvestment in the South End. And that has created community conditions that are really problematic. So, you know, if we're looking at, uh, you know, the impact of generations of disinvestment, I mean, I've talked to people who grew up in Rainier Beach in the 60s and 70s, it was the same.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you short right there, uh, just so that we can move on.
Okay.
And this is gonna be a question, uh, for both of you. How would you incentivize, uh, officers to join the police force, uh, right now? Or do you think we need to? What, what do you think is the morale of the police force? And are we going to have enough officers if we need them?
Are you asking me or Tanya?
Yeah, it's gonna go to both of you, but I'll start with you.
What I will say is that SPD itself has said that they can't hire for the budget authority that they already have, right? They, because they have to go through the police academy and it takes a long time, and I think they can hire maybe 15 officers a year. So they, as I said, we have fully funded their staffing plan and they are going through the process, but it's been difficult, not the least of which reasons is because it's hard to recruit right now. And that is not just a Seattle problem. Across the country, departments are having a hard time hiring officers because the next generation has different ideas about whether they want to be involved in that. The other thing I will say is that we have an internal department problem when even beloved officers like Detective Cookie Bolden, uh, are suing the department for discrimination. She has worked there for 20 years, and she is suing the department for discrimination. So we have a problem here because it is not just that the officers are, you know, maybe the way they are responding to act, to incidents itself causes an incident like killing a pedestrian. They are harassing their neighbors-
10 seconds.
They are, you know, ignoring, uh, dep- they're, so yes, they are harassing their neighbors. My point is, when officers themselves are fighting against a toxic culture in the workplace, we have a problem. And that is, uh, you know, this isn't a staffing issue because the council's being mean-
That's it.
This is an internal department problem, and it is an internal problem to fix.
And I'm going to get to you, Candidate Wu, uh, but I'm curious, Councilmember Morales, uh, we have four districts where no incumbents are running. Do you think that the Seattle City Council was part of the problem that caused this morale change because of what was taking place? Defund the police, um, folks are saying the first African-American, uh, superintendent of the Police Department quit because of these things. Do you think that the City Council and the actions of the City Council contributed to this negative, uh, perception of being a police officer in Seattle?
I think that there is an internal department issue that needs to be resolved. I will, I will acknowledge that, uh, you know, I mean, I came into office in January 2020 and less than 60 days later, we all went home for a global pandemic. We thought we'd be home for two weeks, and we ended up working from home for two years. So absolutely, uh, it was hard for a new slew of council members to come in, learn their jobs from home, try to understand how to do their job, how to negotiate, how to do a budget, and then we had George Floyd murdered and all of the response that happened to that. I'm not making excuses for the divisiveness that we all have seen on City Council, uh, but I will say that it was not an easy place to come into, and, uh, the fact that we have, you know, different political perspectives is certainly how democracy works.
10 seconds.
And I will say that, you know, my hope is that whoever comes into office for the next four years is really able to bootpath that and agree to disagree if necessary, but I agree that the divisiveness is not productive for our city and it's certainly not helpful for our communities.
Uh, Candidate Wu, kind of the same question, but I, I wanna start with, uh, again, um, the fact that you are now running. Um, there have been some questions about the fact that there were years that you didn't even vote. Uh, do, how did, how, what is your impression of how the previous council handled those conditions that Candidate, or excuse me, that Councilmember Morales was just talking about? Again, four incumbents are not running anymore, and there's this issue, uh, defund the police, and that didn't turn out to be really popular. And there's this issue, defund the police, and that didn't turn out to be really popular. And you can correct me if I'm wrong if you feel that way. What, what is your feeling about the current situation, the morale with the police? Do you want more police officers? Do you want more community policing? And is the past Seattle City Council kind of responsible for where we're at right now?
I'd like to, can I answer the first question?
Whatever you want to do, I'll, I'll bring it back around.
Thank you. Okay, so first off, yes, Seattle City Council did not defund police. But what I think happened is that Seattle City Council demoralized police. We had six hundred officers leave the force. And, you know, the vote did come through and Councilmember Morales, you voted against that funding. You voted to, for public safety measures, supporting police, and you were on the losing end of that vote. And so we saw, we saw that and you, I, according to perception, it looks like you're still trying to defund police because you never backtrack from that stance. And so I think a lot of people are confused when you say we need police. Like, what do you mean when you, in the past, through your policy, has not really supported police? And I think the reason why police left and drove is because they didn't want to work for a manager or for a boss that does not support them, who wants to.
Not the boss of the police department, that's the chief and the mayor. That's who their bosses are.
So you have.
They don't report to me, I allocate resources and I set policy. That's what the city council does. The department does not report to the council, the chief does not report to the council. He reports to the mayor, that is the chain of command.
But you have influence and you also have relationships, more so than most of us. You have a direct connection because they do, you do work together.
I'm saying that I am leading based on what my community says.
Hold on, hold on, I will give you, I want to have kind of a free form conversation. But, but I'm, I'm, I wanna, I wanna let the candidates get their word through. And you know what, and then I'll come to you. All right, so candidate Wu, you were, you were talking. Candidate Wu.
Thank you. And so according to your track record, I mean, I'm hearing that you don't really have a relationship with police. And so how are we able to work together in southeast Seattle, south Seattle, to be able to promote this short term solution? We need to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. We need short term solution, we need long term solution. But right now, I recognize like we need accountability, we need reform in the police department, we need more cultural competent training. But you can't just stereotype the entire police force based on a few people's bad, I guess, judgments or poor, I guess, behavior. And so I think we really need to. If we, we can't, we need alternatives to policing, but we can't do a kidney transplant without a kidney. And so we shouldn't have defunded the police or demoralized the police.
I wanna, I wanna go to our audience again, this is a little different. It's, it's a little more informal and again, engaging our community. So the young person there in the black, seems, yes, you seem like you had something to say. But, but I'm gonna try and limit you, Deanna. Will you give her this microphone? And, and you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to agree to give it back in about thirty seconds, okay? Well, I wanna, we wanna, we want our folks who are listening to hear as well. So, no, we have an audience that's also on the air, so we need the microphone.
You have about thirty seconds. Okay, we can go, if there's another, you have about thirty seconds.
Thank you.
If you don't want to talk, don't shout out and disrupt what we're doing. You have thirty seconds.
Tonya Wu, you just mentioned that you can't give, you can't do a kidney replacement without a kidney. Councilmember Morales, I heard you talking about Choose One Eighty and other diversion programs that you have seen being successful. Can you talk about some more about those, about how those programs have been bringing public safety to, and, and reducing need for excessive funding of the current Seattle Police Department?
So, can I respond? Okay, so yes, when we are talking about alternatives to policing, we are talking about, at least in the terms of, you know, violence interruption, community safety programs. That's part of what we need to do, we really need to be thinking about prevention. And that's what I was trying to get to earlier. So prevention means taking a public health approach and really asking the question, why are so many people at risk of gun violence in the first place? What are the, you know, community conditions that this created? And that's the point I was making about investing in community. So we need to work with schools so that their students and educators can identify that somebody might be at risk for gun violence. We need to be knitting together.
Ten seconds.
Cohesion, you know, and then these programs really provide diversion. They provide victim support after an incident happens. And they, more importantly, intervene and help prevent some of this gun violence from happening because they know who the folks are and how to, you know, bring the temperature down.
Candidate Wu, you have an opportunity to respond in any way that you want to because it's equal time. So you can respond directly to the question?
I agree, we need long term solutions and the CID community watch is one of them. We go out there and we try to build relations, build those connections, yes, they fight, show, bring hope to the community that people can travel and are not afraid to be out after seven PM. But at the same time, we have a situation and an issue now. We have our homicide rates going up and we need to address that. And we need to address that with the resources that we have. And in the absence of any other options, we have to really try. Because I cannot deal with a shooting with my group. If there's a shooting, who do we have to call? Who does security call, who do these groups call? They have to call police. And we need to get our response times down from seven minutes to four minutes and be able to have respond to hate crimes like what happened to the Wing Luke. And so we really need to hold our opposition accountable, but we have to give them the resources and support they need to be able to be successful.
Okay, like I said, I will go to the audience. If you have something to say, I want to hear from you. And I know you've been holding your hand, we're gonna move on from this particular subject and we're gonna move on to homelessness, which is also, I'm gonna double that up with affordable housing. But I'm gonna give you an opportunity to ask your question, if you'd like to ask your question. Just tell us your name and then ask your question or, or to which candidate you would like to make the statement.
Hi, my name's Julie Rawls. I'm a family physician, I also had a brother with severe mental illness. I lived in California, Albuquerque and here and watched this whole public safety issue for decades. In my profession, we have standards for training, professionalism, documentation. You can't change the documentation and your patient gets to look at it, really. We do not have national, this isn't just a city council issue. You gotta get the state and federal. And when I moved here, I was watching the nine eight eight program that was being rolled out across the country to create a team of two to go on boots on the ground to work police. But in Washington State, that money, our federal reps gave it away to three corporations for. Okay, question is, all across the country, if we don't have great standards for training, what is going on in these academies? That's where I think the problem is, not the departments. Look at Wayne, Albert Wayne Frederick's death. When he, they went to court, the family to sue about his death, who came? Experts and the people who train the police. This is how we do it, we all did it that way, so it's okay. He's dead, look at those academies, sorry.
To respond?
I love the Before the Badge program, if you're not familiar with it. They take cadets who are about to enter into the academy and they take them around the community to meet community members. They can do the CD, the CID, different community centers. And they're also hiring diverse people, people who look like us. And I've met many of them and they've been to several meetings. I met a young lady who's been baking her entire life, is now going to become a police officer. People from diverse backgrounds from the community can come back and serve their community. And so fortunately, this program just started, I believe it's about a year old, but it takes about a year to two years to train officers. So we're finally starting to see these officers come out to the community. And so I believe, like, it's, it's getting better and it takes time. But, you know, we have to have that accountability in place and build that trust and work together. We cannot tear people down who disagree with us.
Councilmember Morales, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I agree that we need, you know, better statewide training. You know, one of the things that I also am a supporter of is the Washington State Police Accountability Measures. So I don't think we're gonna reform our departments one by one. You know, we do need statewide expectations, statewide standards for what accountable policing looks like. Because as we've all seen, like, this is not about a few bad apples. The entire culture of the department needs to change. And that's not to say that every officer needs to change. But something about the way this department is operating makes it okay to mock people who have been killed, to harass their neighbors, to put up a tombstone that's been stolen from somebody's memorial. And it is just showing contempt for us. And that's not okay. And I do think that we have every right to expect therapy here from our department. And we have every right to ask the question, are we getting any return on that investment? They take up almost fifty percent of our general fund.
Ten seconds.
We don't have money for community programs, we don't have money for treatment, we don't have money for mental health support. So what, how are we spending our money and could we be doing something more effectively?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna get to the money issue as well, but I do want to get to these two, I'm gonna combine them. Affordable housing and homelessness. Again, a very nuanced issue. So you have folks who are blaming the crime on the homeless community. Then you have folks who say, well, what are you gonna do? You, you can't criminalize being homeless. And then you say, well, we need, we need housing. And then you say, well, some folks don't want to be housed, they want to be out there. So I will start with you, Councilmember Morales, and, and you'll have one minute in any form you want to. And again, we'll deep, dig into this deeper, but your overall statement, and I'm combining these two, homelessness and affordable housing. And maybe, I mean, easily not combine these two, but just for the purpose of time sakes right now, I'm combining these two. Your statement on affordable housing and homelessness and how are you gonna deal with this situation?
The first is that when I see somebody who is struggling to survive on the street, I think somebody who has been failed by every system in our society. Housing, job, healthcare, education, treatment. And so we have an obligation to protect the health and safety of our community. We've all been hearing that a lot. We have an obligation to protect the health and safety of everyone in our community, including homeless people.
Yep.
So, and the reason that I think it is connected to affordable housing is because the other thing we know is that every time rent goes up by a hundred dollars, it increases homelessness in our community. And everybody in this room knows that it is becoming a completely unaffordable place to live. And so we need to address that, the affordability crisis, by building more housing, building more kinds of.
Ten seconds.
And also building more for folks who are experiencing homelessness, more sanctioned places for them to be so that if we move them from an encampment, there is some place that they can be where they can get access to.
And candidate Wu, you, you heard my statement before. Again, I'm, I'm just asking questions. The, the homeless issue and the affordable housing issue, they could easily be two separate things, but they are somehow intrinsically intermingled. We have tiny houses. How, how would you like to resolve this situation? How do you handle this situation? What are your thoughts on homelessness and affordable housing? Remembering that there are people here who are saying, this is, there's a homeless crisis, but I don't want them moving into the house that's vacant next to me. So, go ahead.
Yes, I believe all of these issues are intertwined, but for affordable housing and homelessness in particular, we have the comprehensive plan coming forward in the next, next year. And that really, we need to really focus on looking and make sure that we're not leaving behind our seniors and anyone else that are more vulnerable or marginalized. We do, we do need affordable housing, I agree with Councilmember Morales on that. We need to build more and we need to build efficiently and fast, all types of housing. And we need more tiny houses, more RV lots. We also need to make sure that, you know, the voucher program, rental assistance. We have to prevent people from becoming unhoused in the first place. And making sure that our unhoused people who are going to housing have the wraparound service they need to succeed, the partnerships with social workers to help them navigate through the system. Going into our, into our encampments and chatting with everybody, everyone's situation is different. And so everyone's needs are different and making sure that we build that trust, we build those connections and really get to the root cause of people's issue. People have been through a broken system and they've been cycled through and they lost that trust, they lost that connection, don't want to go in. And for that small percentage of people who've been through that, how do we build that trust to get them to come back inside, accept services and then get them to the path where they can get to a place.
Ten seconds.
Where they can have a job and come back and also help others. And so I think it's, it's a, we have to look at what's been working and what people want and really figure out what everyone's individual, the core need is.
Councilmember Morales, I, I've heard billions is the cost of, of housing folks. And at the same time, again, we, we have to do something. So this comes back to the money issue. I, I've heard billions and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but where, where, where are we gonna get the money? And then the other part of that is how do you incentivize developers to create low income or affordable housing when that's not what they do? So just again, diving deeper into this.
Yeah, so, you know, we are in the situation we're in because of sixty years of really crappy federal housing policy that disinvested from affordable housing over the last several decades. And also because the city grew way faster than anybody expected and we just weren't keeping pace. And because as a city, we have historically redlined communities like ours and only allowed people to own property in some parts of the city. And so we have to unwind all of that. And it's not gonna be cheap and it's not gonna be fast. So, you know, in terms of building, yes, as a city, you know, your rank twenty private developers, you know, if they were gonna solve this problem, they would have solved it already. So we do rely on the government to step in and intervene. We have a housing levy that will be on the ballot this year. And it's gonna be really important because that is a key way that we pay for affordable housing in the city. And, you know, we have to, our Office of Housing.
Ten seconds.
We also need the feds to step up and I think there is starting to be understanding at the federal level, although with the government, I don't know if we've found on that.
Okay, I want to give candidate Wu, and we'll go to a question now if you want to. The same opportunity to, to house people, it was to house people. Everybody just said, I've heard billions of dollars to, to, to solve that if you're gonna throw money at it. And developers, if that's the answer, people, this, I think we had the most cranes in the country at one point. As far as development was current, that was maybe pre-pandemic, but I knew at one point that was what was going on here. How do you incentivize developers, if that's the plan, to create more affordable housing when that's not what they do?
Yes, I, I believe public-private partnerships are really important. And also for developers, we build incentives, new market tax credits, MFT, MHA. And how do we give like density bonuses to people who are providing affordable housing? How do we take away that percentage where people can pay to not build affordable housing? I think we need to limit that and force developers to build that affordable housing and in every single development project. I think we also need to, I'm really, I love our land trust, be able to co-op and own property and, and within the community. I know there's a group that's doing that right now where they're trying to buy a block and try to own it within the community members who live there. And especially how do we look at the federal state government to help a part of the harm, the legacy of segregation relying that we're experiencing? How do we look at, you know, zoning so we're helping our, our communities of color landowners?
Ten seconds.
Small families, trying to build more like CDOs and, and units in their backyards, mother-in-law units. How do we help that group get access to resources from the city and expedite permits?
Okay, we're gonna move on to drugs, but I, I do want to provide the opportunity for someone who has a question on what we just talked about. And again, I think we all know it is gonna be really difficult to discuss these issues in one hour. That's why I'm trying to connect what happens at thirty thousand feet. That's why I'm trying to connect what happens at 30,000 feet to when the rubber hits the road. Did you want to say something? I, I gotta give you the microphone if you want, do you, but we have people who are listening to us as well on streaming, and they need to be involved in this conversation.
Tanya, Tammy, where do you guys live? How much does your house cost? Sorry, I'm a real estate broker, and I know how much your house costs. I don't know yours, Tanya, but I think it is really important. I make some money, my husband makes some money, and we live in a great part of Seward Park, but we also just moved from Rainier Beach, and it has been horrific. And the gun violence and the non-response from you has been pretty bad. So I just wanna, I think, I think it's really important that people know where you live, how big your house is, and how much it costs.
So I should have been to sort of liquid Seward Park. I don't know what my house has been valued at lately, but that's not correct, I'm sure.
How, how much did you say?
No.
Three million? Okay, well, that's what you're saying. Anyway. So we're, you can, Candidate Wu, do you want, do you choose to answer this question or?
Yes, I, I live in the Dunlap neighborhood. I think the house is valued at $900,000, less than a million. But I live a couple blocks from the Rainier Beach Safeway, live a couple blocks away from Atlantic Street ramp, and I hear the gunshots every single weekend. And also, I've, I can not only escape it here where I live, but where I work in the CID, I hear the gunshots there. And so it's, I, I hear and see the violence and am really concerned.
Okay.
Can I respond to another point that was made? Because I hear that I don't respond. I wanted to be really clear that I have personally organized and attended at least 100 community safety meetings over the last couple of years. That's just what I've been through. My staff attends more meetings because there are actually 20 neighborhoods in this district, and I cannot be everywhere at the same time. So I just want to make it really clear, I organized for two years with the Rainier Beach Neighborhood, with Marty Jackson, with Councilmember Zohli, with Rob Valentine, with Urban Impact Urban Family, and the organizations that are involved in the Community Safety Initiative, which I funded at $5 million. So I just want to be really clear that I have been very active in the neighborhoods that are experiencing this violence.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. I did want to, I did want to give you the, the time to say what you say. And Candidate Wu, is there anything that you would like to add at this point? Again, I'm shooting for equal time for everyone.
Yes, I am running because in 2020, we saw people who had nothing to do with the George Floyd protests come, get pushed through the Chinatown International District. They broke our windows, they looted our small businesses. And where was Tammy? And then we saw the COVID racism and the pandemic, when our, our, our little shops were dealing with racism, getting shut down. We saw, like, high-impact projects coming up around us, and we didn't get to have a say. We reached out and, and we never heard. And we, we, we offered organized town hall meetings-
I had several phone conversations, and we have-
I'm gonna give you all a second to do this, because we gotta move on to drugs.
I think it's like one or two.
Candidate, Candidate Wu, did you have something to add to this?
Oh, yes, and a lot of, it's Walton Jackson, which is just half a block away from the Summit Sierra High School, and our, we saw our small businesses shut down, and this issue is still ongoing four years later. And so a lot of things have been happening that we would like some action and attention and meaningful conversation and dialogue, especially with the senior community who are not English speakers.
And I, I thank, I thank you both, and I really would like to give you time to have this conversation with these, but we've only got an hour, and I will respect your time. And we have to get to drugs. And I appreciate our community's concern and passion and interest as well. The City Council recently voted to align city municipal code with the new state law making drug possession and public use a gross misdemeanor. The debate around the worsening drug crisis centers on whether to arrest and prosecute people with substance use disorders or to bolster treatment options. We'll start with Candidate Wu. How do you feel about that?
Yes, fentanyl's been around for two years. We started seeing these, dealing with these deaths, I saw this two years ago, and was really alarmed at how this drug is not a drug, it's a poison, it's killing our, it's killing people. I have had done CPR on young people trying drugs for the first time, who didn't realize it was so deadly. And I've seen people who were taking a fentanyl-laced Percocet they had got from the legal market because they couldn't afford their drugs, not realizing it was laced with fentanyl, and having to do CPR and Narcan on them as well. And so we, I, I'm surprised at the city for not having a plan. We have some great ideas, but nothing actionable. And this was, the drug awareness from, was three weeks ago, was the only action that has been proposed. And with the absence of anything else, that's, we, we must prioritize diversion, we must prioritize treatment. But at the same time, we really need to see that happening and seeing that roll out. And I think this drug awareness-
Ten seconds.
-promised funding that we, we still need to see if it's in the budget to, to be able to enact. But we really need something to be done. The time for action has passed. We need to do something. We need to stop the deaths. I think there's 11 deaths a day here in King County from fentanyl overdose, and we just can't sit back and do nothing.
Councilmember Morales, do you want me to repeat that, or did you?
I completely agree, and this bill does nothing, which is why we voted against it. Because this bill, all this bill does is give the city attorney prosecutorial authority instead of the King County prosecutor. That's all this bill does. It doesn't change the police authority, it doesn't change anything. What I have left, what it doesn't do is actually provide treatments. We thought maybe that would be money in the mayor's budget, but he did not actually include money for diversion. He didn't include money for treatment. All this does is give the police the authority to put people in jail. Now, this is a public health crisis, I think we can all agree. Drug overdose is a public health crisis, and it deserves a public health response. That's not what this bill is. So, you know, I have three family members who died from addiction. So this is personal, and I can tell you that putting any of them in jail would not have solved their problems. It would have made it worse. I don't see this as, as a public health solution at all. I sit on the Board of Health as well, and what our public health professionals are saying is that we need more access to treatment, we need more access to, to alternative response, to, you know, folks who could go out on the streets and respond and provide access to services, we need mobile medical clinics-
Ten seconds.
-consumption sites. There are a lot of things we could be doing to solve the drug problem. It requires investment, more than the city has, and it's actually the county's job to provide support for public health, I have public health resources. But putting people in jail for drugs is no solution at all.
Okay, we are almost out of time here. Quick question for both of you, and Councilmember Morales, I'll start with you. If, if, if you don't identify as this, just say, but I'm, I'm giving some options here. Do you consider yourself more conservative, moderate, centrist, or progressive? Progressive. Same.
I consider myself progressive.
Progressive. Do, do, do either of you think that there is room on the City Council for a conservative City Council member? Councilmember Morales?
Look, the best working relationship I have with Council right now is actually with Councilmember Peterson, who I agree with very rarely. But I really appreciate that we can have very candid conversations, we can have serious policy discussions, we can agree to disagree, which we do often. But every once in a while, we find something that we agree on, even if our motivation is different or the outcome we're looking for is different. And we have worked together several times over the last four years, and I'm really proud of that ability to work across the aisle, although he considers himself a Democrat. But, you know, it is, I mean, to your point, Tony, like, it is important that the council be able to work together. And I, look, I've been there four years now, I know that there are divisive council members. We can work-
Ten seconds.
...for the benefit of all of our community, and I'm really looking forward to the opportunity.
Same question. Candidate Wu, again, first of all, how, would you, I think you identified as progressive. Seattle is known as a very liberal city, often looked to by other cities when it comes to how we deal with issues, where we put our money at. Is, is there room on the City Council for a conservative City Council member, a conservative voice? Would that work in Seattle? Is that important in Seattle?
Yes, I believe there is room, and it does work, and it is working. Because regardless of your personal view, you represent your district, you present people. And everybody, regardless of their ideology or their political beliefs, you represent them, and you have to listen, and you have to really be the advocate for the issues in your district, and you have to bring solutions. And, and that's why I'm running, is because there needs to be change in this district. We need to go in a different direction because what we've been doing these last couple of years, we haven't seen very much results. I feel like we're not heading in the right direction.
Okay. This, this next question is, is really quick, because we're gonna go a little over time, but I, there's only one way for me to get to it. And again, without going into the nuance, Councilmember Wu, I'll start with you. Taxes that you're in favor of, taxes that you don't agree with? And if you can explain that to our audience in 45 seconds?
Oh, my goodness.
Go ahead. If you can't, that's what you're up against right now.
Got it.
There are, I, I can't go into all the ta, I don't have enough time.
Okay. I agree with the progressive task, progressive tax, tax force. And, you know, some of the taxes that are illegal and some didn't push forward for further legislation, so I'd like to see those legislations move forward. And I'm not against progressive taxes, but I think we need to really look at our budget as is and look at what we're spending, and demand metrics for results and success for every single city department. Hold everybody accountable. As we all know, we've all applied through city grants before, we know how arduous that process is. I think we need to hold all of our city departments and organizations in the same vein.
Okay, and Councilmember Morales, you know what I'm saying, that taxes are a way to create income. Taxes that you are not in favor of, taxes that you think are doing the job that they're intended to do, and if you can take that down from the 30,000-foot level and make this something that we can all understand in 45 seconds, that'd be great.
We are a growing city. We're gonna have about a million people here in the next 20 years, so we have a lot of needs to be met. We've been talking about a lot about tonight. We have a giant hole in our budget, and so we have a progressive revenue tax course that's talked about three things that are particularly actionable that we could move forward on right now. Expanding the existing payroll expense tax, a city capital gains tax, and a CEO pay ratio tax for, you know, taxing on the difference between the highest-paid employee and lowest-paid employee. Those are all things that we are contemplating right now as we begin the budget conversation. I don't think anybody's settled on anything yet, but those are all things that we can start to look at, because what we can't continue to do is rely on property tax and sales tax, which burden, overly burdens our working families. And, you know, that's not a, kind of a very regressive way of thinking.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm trying to make up my mind too, and I, I hope that you both understand that I'm just asking questions. But it, it does seem like, as a homeowner, I'm always taxed. But, you know, maybe that's what happens when you're a homeowner. So. Yeah, but that's just where I'm coming from. It's, it's always, I'm taxed as a homeowner. And some of you may not agree with that or don't like that, but I don't appreciate Yeah. I wish I could get the mic to you. Okay, we gotta get to closing statements. The last thing before that, very quickly, you get to each ask, ask each other a question. And so, Candidate Wu, is there a question that you would like to ask Councilmember Morales?
Oh, that's a good question. Your proudest piece of legislation and one, and one that you may not be so proud of?
Well, the proudest piece is something that we have introduced but are still working on. It's called Connected Communities. We were talking earlier about how we get more affordable housing and developers to work with affordable housing. So this would allow developers to partner with community-based organizations for their particular projects to create affordable mixed-income housing, and would be targeted in areas of the, of the city where racial covenants used to exist. So the idea is to move mixed-income apartments into neighborhoods that typically excluded renters.
And Councilmember Morales, you have the option of asking Candidate Wu a question as well.
Can you talk about experience that you have for being a council member that is more than just boots on the ground?
Yes. So last year, when the King County wanted to expand the Soto Shelter, we, we wanted, we were not anti-shelter, we wanted more engagement, because we found out the city and the county was not doing outreach and engagement with the community, no one knew what was going on. For a shelter that had been passed, proposed and passed in May, did not, community did not know about it until September for a facility that was supposed to open November, December. And so, you know, there was the racial toolkit, and no one was following, and, you know, we, we didn't feel like we were being heard. So we went to city council chambers, we went to King County chambers, and we, we gave public comments, and we quickly tried to engage our community members through the political process. And then when we found out that, you know, that project had ended because ARPA funds would have run out by the end of the year, and King County was not gonna be able to finish that facility in time to be able to use those funds, and they wanted to disperse elsewhere, we were like, we need more investments into the CID, into the South Seattle area. And so we started going to city council, demanding, not only city council, but King County Council, demand to be part of the budgeting process. And so we looked at the budget, we tried to, we, we talked to different council members, different organizations, to try to figure out, like, how do we propose legislation? What do we need, what do we want? And we learned, we didn't get involved until it was too late, and it was like the last two weeks of the budgeting process, but we decided from there on out that, you know, we want to be part of this process every single year, and our community needs this, and we had not been involved previously.
Ten seconds.
We've seen years of disinvestments, we've seen, you know, what's been happening in our community for the last four years, and, and didn't feel like we were being heard, and this is how we're gonna do it, and that's what leading me to run today.
All right. How about, how about a hand for both of our candidates? One of these individuals will be representing this district, and obviously Columbia City, we're concerned about Columbia City, although it's a big district. So you, Tanya, would you like to go first, or would you like to go second? You have the option on your closing statement.
Ah, I, I can go first since, because I'm wrong.
Okay, you want to go, you want to go first? Okay, you can go first. You, you can address this, or you can not address this in your closing statement. Again, there's so much to get to, and this is not easy at all, and some people aren't gonna be happy that I'm even bringing this up. But I'm concerned that we have race problems, that we have black-on-Asian crime, white-on-Asian crime, immigrant-on-immigrant crime, and nobody talks about it. But it's, it's a reality. And if we're not gonna talk about it, I only see it getting worse, and we know that there are incidents that just happened that we know that people have been arrested for. And so you can include addressing that in your closing statement or not. The other thing is recently, about a month ago, maybe two months ago, we had 18 windows broken in Columbia City businesses. And we know who did it, but nothing's happening. So those are just my thoughts that I'm sharing. I hate to include on your closing statement with that information, but it's the only way for me to get it in with the time that we have. So Candidate Wu, if you'd like to go first, again, if you'd like to address the potential or if you think that we do have hate crimes, because that makes it different, or no, we just have crime and we just have a diverse community- Um, or no, we just have crime and we just have a diverse community. And we had eighteen windows broken and we know who did it. And nothing happened, so.
And how much, how long do we have? A minute?
No, no, you have two minutes and because I threw some extra stuff in there, if you address it, I'll let you go a little bit over.
Okay, okay.
I, I know like there are other bigger issues happening, but I think this totally separate. We cannot penalize our, penalize our, our small business owners, especially in historic districts like Columbia City and Chinatown, other areas in the city. It's not just for windows, it's history and it's so much more to repair. And not only that, it's morale, it's community. So how can we come together and denounce these crimes, denounce hate crimes, make these statements in coverage of all our communities? They just accept that we will not stand forth. Um, and we have to fast forward and ease their way and heal, especially from the last four years of COVID when our children, our seniors, twelve children need more support than ever. And so if only I was there on person action, but I saw that there needed to be more for our housing by front of, we needed more alternative support group. We needed, you know, help with our, and help communities go into the top of people. I did that. I did that with CID and I can do that for the city. And I would like to be able to, you know, have the opportunity to present real results and solutions. I need to be available to them now. We cannot, we don't have time for idle debates. We don't have time to discuss about perfect plan, having any, any of a good plan. We need actually to do something right now, to get the long-term, short-term solutions. But we have to be able to both at once and we have to do it all of the above, post, what works, what doesn't work. I love our past, our history and the, you know, nineteen ninety, when the Negro lost gays happening and, you know, we had plans with families for gay, for gay violence. We had programs that had, that was, that was, that was, that was.
Ten seconds.
Slowed down in the early two thousand, mid-two thousand. And so how do we work together to be as good leaders? What's gonna happen, help them to now from here from that and come up with solutions that we can act now to help solve the problem. And so my name is Tanya, I'm ready for the district. I've lived here my entire life, so I know, I know my neighborhood and and I want to be able to bring home skills that have done to a higher level. And I care and I want to help and I want to put this on us all together to create a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Wu. Councilmember Morales, uh, I know it's an awkward question. Um, but it's a reality and I have had people say to me, ah, this is gonna be another incidence of the reason to say that black people are committing crimes. I've had folks say, well, at least it's happening to Asians and not me. Um, which for some folks was a sense of relief. And so I'm just asking, in, in your opinion, do we have a racial problem? Are there hate crimes being committed? Members of our community talk about it, but don't talk about it out loud. And we're talking about it out loud right now. And then the other thing is, we had eighteen windows broken on Columbia City. We know who did it. Police know who did it. And nothing happened. Uh, so maybe you even know who did it. I mean, everybody seems to know who did it. Uh, on a, on a scooter, just in like seven minutes, just on a scooter, bam, bam, breaking windows. It's on tape. Anyway, you can address those things. Um, and if you want to include that in your two-minute closing statement, I'll give you some extra time. But at some point, we have to discuss race.
Uh, well, I guess what I will start with is if the police know who did it, then they need to go follow up and investigate and deal with it. Uh, uh, yes, we have hate crimes happening in the city. Uh, you know, we put, we restored money that the mayor had cut for indictment hates programming uh, in the last budget cycle. Uh, and look, like this is not a new issue. Unfortunately, the current political environment uh, means that it is easy for uh, particularly, you know, white supremacists to stir up trouble in all of our communities and we know that that's happening everywhere. Um, what I will say about uh, you know, the sort of, it sounds like what you were implying is the sort of um, overemphasis on uh, black communities is what I was saying before, which is that we have a history of redlining, of disinvestments, of creating community conditions that lead to violence. And the solution to that is not to just start arresting people. The solution to that is to invest in these communities. So that's the work that I have been doing as a council member. You know, my kind of north star in this work is to close the racial wealth gap in our city. That's what guides everything we do in my office. That's what guides the work around community wealth building. It's what guides the work around supporting the social housing program. Uh, to try to get permanently affordable housing in every neighborhood in the city. It's what guides our work on changing the community conditions. It guides my work on supporting our young people with restorative justice programs in their school, with mental health programs in their school, with uh, getting leadership, funding for leadership for black girls in our high schools, for queer youth in our high schools, uh, for connecting young people to apprenticeship programs. Everything that we do in my office is about trying to address the history of racism in this city and trying to dismantle all of those structures that are keeping people down. That's what guides our work. It's what guides my uh, my budget work. It's what guides my policy work. And I will say, I have not just sat around and done nothing, Tanya. We have actually gotten two hundred fifty million dollars of investment in the South End. And we actively work with our neighbors and everything that we do is driven by what we're hearing from community. I've been organizing in this district for twenty years. I know what people are interested in. I know that there is brilliance in this community. And I'm working to bring those voices into the halls of power and actually work to make sure that what folks in our communities want gets turned into po, into policy and into budget action.
All right. Thank you. Now, unfortunately, I can't, we're already, we're already over time, but I appreciate the interest and I thank you both for being here longer. Uh, but I think that you both know this, it's hard to discuss this and you know how I get on, both of you. I just like open, honest, frank conversation. And again, the goal was to take this thirty thousand foot level and bring it to the streets of our community. So you've been listening to Rainier Avenue Radio uh, dot world yesterday. Uh, we did a pre-debate and a post-debate uh, at South Seattle Community College uh, where the two candidates there also had a debate and then we talked to them before and after. Uh, this one is our community and so we hosted this one. Uh, on the tenth of October, we'll be at the Broadway Performance Center or Hall uh, for a District Three debate. We'll again be doing a pre-debate discussion there where we'll be talking to the candidates and the moderators. Um, because we know that wherever we are, there are people who are marginalized who live in those communities and their voices need to be heard as well. On this, on October thirteenth, we'll be at the University of Washington Hub Ballroom uh, for District Four debate. Again, we will be doing a pre-debate conversation, doing the same things and we'll end up on October seventeenth at North Seattle. Now, I thought it was North Seattle Community College, but somebody was telling me it's North Seattle College. It is college. Okay, yeah, so that's where we'll be on the uh, seventeenth. And um, so thank you for being here. Uh, thank you for those who are in attendance live and your questions and your interest. Thank you for the audience that is watching us through our broadcast media networks, uh, YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, Twitch, um, LinkedIn. Uh, we're sorry we couldn't get your voices heard, but hopefully you heard something that will help you be a more informed voter because one of these folks will be representing our very diverse district. And although there is incredible brilliance in our community and as a radio station, that's what we acknowledge twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Right now, we are suffering just like the rest of the world. And as far as I'm concerned, I would like somebody in office who recognizes that and will push for us to have a better place to be and a better place to live. So thank you all for coming. Uh, and I guess uh, my final words would be, whether you believe you can or whether you believe you cannot, you're probably right. I'm out. Peace.